Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, March 28th, 2023 at 6:30 PM, and I'll call to order the Freetown Board of Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube. This is an in-person meeting, but it's also being streamed on Zoom. For that reason, I have to call Governor Baker's... I have to, sorry, read Governor Baker's order. So, the meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom on July 16th, 2022. Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extend the expiration of provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2023. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely without quorum of the public body physically present at the meeting location and to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Freetown Board of Selectmen will be conducted in person as well via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the town's website, FreetownMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going onto the link and entering the meeting IDs listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public body can adequately access the proceeding in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording transcript or the comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay? So with that, I'm gonna kick it over to Selectman Zager for the Board of Health hearing.
Alright, so this is a continuation for the Board of Health public hearing. A continuation from Board of Health hearing from 3/20/23 for a housing complaint at 41 Locust Street, tenant Barry Marvel, landlord Charles Cromwell. Thank you. So, this... I want to let it be known that this is our... these comment portion has already been closed, so we will be taking no comments from the public or anyone else. So, this was a continuation to make sure that we had a full and fair inspection report done. So, we've had another inspection done. I looked it over and everything seems to be there to me, that full and fair. I don't know if you've had any chance to look it over, Trevor, or if you wanted to?
Yeah, I did look over. I think, you know, maybe just explanation would be helpful. If Kevin could provide, you know, some insight to that or what you found or... Because I know this is done by an independent party, right?
Yeah, so we had... I guess, you know, I'll speak just to the specificity, if that's such a word, right? To this actual public hearing. So, a request was made for an inspection. One was done. The tenant, I think, expressed some displeasure with the completeness of it. I think that was presented to the board in the first public hearing that I was not a part of. My understanding was the public hearing was closed with the decision to send out someone else to do another inspection. We hired an outside professional who specializes in housing inspections to go out and perform an inspection. That has been provided to you folks, in my opinion. There was a complete inspection done at that point in time that met the burden of the housing, in my opinion.
So, yeah, were the... I guess the outcomes significantly different between the original inspection?
I think significant, no. I think that there was commonality between the two. I think between them, there were the issue was... There were similar issues, but then there were additional issues that were noticed by the second inspector. I don't want to speak for either inspector, but I think the initial Mr. Ethier had gone out, and I think he was responding specifically to specific complaints and concerns. And the tenant, well within their rights to request a complete inspection, I think, did that. I don't think there was any ill intent on Mr. Ethier's part to ignore. I think he was just more focused. So, as you can see in the inspection report, all the sections were inspected. There's plenty of notes on there. So, I believe, in fact, it is complete.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any other comments, Trevor? I don't know, Carlos is part of this meeting too, so I don't know if he has any comments or anything, but I don't want to leave anyone out.
Thank you.
You have anything, Carlos?
I do not. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Everything sounds pretty... Sounds like everyone's under due diligence and followed all the procedures. So, there's no questions on my end.
Okay, thank you. Alright. So, with that, I am going to entertain a motion that we deem that this report is fair and complete.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, so I guess we'll kick it back over to you, Trevor.
Alright, so do we have to close the public hearing or?
No, the public hearing was closed.
Alright, alright, that's right. Alright, so moving on. Alright, now we have executive session minutes from 3/20/2023. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve, but not release the executive session minutes from 3/20/2023.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually, should we do roll call votes because?
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright. So, next is to have the videographer film town events at a rate of $75 per hour. So, this seems like an interesting idea. I like it. We'll just have to pick, you know, choose what events that we want to be, you know, videotaped. And obviously, I don't think it'd be the whole thing, but maybe some highlights of different events. Is that what we're thinking?
Yes. There was some talk about starting with maybe the Earth Day event coming up.
Yeah, that'd be great. Carlos, any thoughts on this?
I think it's a great idea. I like your idea of highlights. That way, the town gets a little taste of what's going on. So, this is a genius idea.
Yeah. I think that'd be cool. Maybe some bike races, something, I don't know. Alright.
We get the strawberry festival.
Yeah, fireworks.
Parade. The parade would be awesome.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just those events, I think, to have that option would be great.
I think that'd be great. Alright. So with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve having the videographer film town events at a rate of $75 per hour.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright. Here we have discussion on the school assessment.
Yeah, I basically just wanted to update the full board. I know, Trevor, you're on the regional FinCom, and the other board members have been involved, but I just wanted to update and make sure I'm in line with your wishes and how you want me to proceed. The original school budget came out, oh, close my numbers, like $45 million... Grab that page. Of course, I had it a minute ago. That was an increase over last year's budget of $2,228,829 for a 5.14% increase in the overall regional district budget. So, obviously, right off the bat, when the towns can only levy an additional 2.5% yearly, this raises alarms for us. So, we began inquiring of the school, the school committee, and the regional FinCom committee in terms of that this is not a sustainable budget to the town. And I know you've all been involved on some level with that. The town, the assessment to the town was $13,012,715 last year. So, even though the budget's $45 million, you know, there's all kinds of state aid. Lakeville has to pay a portion, and Freetown's portion was $13,012,715. They were proposing originally an increase of about 8%, I believe. And I just, we, you know, I iterated to them, "We can't do it." Like, "We just cannot do that." We had quite a bit of increase last year. So, they have gone back to the drawing board. And while the assessment right now is only 1.1% increase over last year's for a total of $13,155,841 to the town of Freetown, the way they came down on the town's assessment is by using some of the E&amp;D funds. And also, the governor has given them quite a bit more money. The state aid has increased quite a bit of money. So, the overall budget has only decreased from $45,569,530 to $45,201,501. So, that's a decrease of roughly $369,000 over their original ask. And what concerns me is that they're using E&amp;D funds and whatnot to reduce the assessment, which is not sustainable. So, I'm still concerned with the overall top number. Although the assessment is much more palatable to the town, I'm just concerned about the long-term budget increase. And the governor has increased state aid, but if the state should have financial issues in the future, they will reduce state aid, and then the town will be liable for those funds. So, I just kind of wanted to give you the latest where we were at. They have, I will say, they have worked diligently to get the assessment down for the town. We're still, we're still at the, I think, at the bargaining table, trying to see if they can cut some other expenses out of their budget to get us a more sustainable, long-term budget and still keep the school educational value there, because we do have a good school system, and nobody wants that to change. So, there's a balancing act that we're trying to do. But I just wanted the board to be aware, know where we're at, see the latest numbers, and sort of understand my concerns with the budget. And I have obviously voiced them pretty loudly everywhere. It's a big number.
Yeah, I think that valid concerns, and I know we had the last FinCom meeting, you know, for the regional school district, you know, Lakeville has the same kind of concerns. So, it's not like, you know, I think we're all kind of in agreement that the, you know, the long-term sustainability is definitely a concern thing across the board. One thing to note, so we did vote, we voted on this particular budget, right? But this is the max. This is setting the ceiling. So, potentially, you know, it could go down, which would be good, but we don't know exactly, you know, where that money's gonna come from. But I think that, Trevor, your point too is, is that, you know, using, shifting numbers around, not necessarily overall reducing the budget, which is interesting. And then, I mean, I'm curious too of how, you know, we obviously had less students go to a vocational school this year, because, you know, there wasn't an option.
Right.
Right? So, going down the road, if BP does happen, which looks like it will, how will that impact this budget, right? Is that gonna, is it neutral or is it?
Has nothing to do with this budget, right? This budget will, this assessment is for the Lakeville, Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District. It's to operate the schools within that district. The BP budget is a whole separate school district, and we will be responsible for our share of that, that budget, just like this budget.
I guess what I was thinking, like, the enrollment will go, in theory, go down.
In theory, I think it will go down marginally, and it's kind of been teacher chartering in the same level for the last few years. There is some that expect it to tick up, because some children were taken out during COVID to be homeschooled, and those kids are slowly returning back to the public school system. But we really don't know. We haven't seen any substantial movement that I'm aware of, one way or the other, with enrollment. We also have the MBTA station coming in. So, we don't know where this enrollment's gonna go.
Yeah, Lakeville's been, you know, obviously, they've had MBTA station there for a long time. I'd be interested to see if there's any kind of additional state aid that they get because of that, or is there something that, you know, that was now, Freetown now being?
The business director, Carol Lee, is at the school is phenomenal. I can ask her. She's unfortunately leaving soon, but I can ask her if that... But I don't think Lakeville gets anything extra from the state. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So, with meeting in the past, I remember that this enrollment to Old Colony was roughly about 18 to 20 students on average per year. This past year, we had 15 students. But, so you're looking at a slight increase if you go based on historic numbers, but, you know, there's a new school, more opportunities. It might draw some additional interest, right? So, we could see more go in that direction. And then, to your point, the part, the other part that scares me is when you're not increased, when you're not decreasing the overall number, and then they're going off of percentages. Those percentages become that much larger to us next year, right? So, it's just compiled. So, I appreciate the hard work that you're putting in, because there's never easy questions to ask, you know? And, you know, to your point, not go against the value of, you know, giving the kids good schooling, because that's obviously number one, but...
It's a tough, it's a very difficult subject, right?
And in some of their...
Because it's not easy.
Some of their budget increases, similar to ours, are contractual. They are what they are, and you can't, you can't change them. Some of them are just, you know, I mean, their health insurance had a big increase, which they're still trying to figure out. They're still trying to see if they can do something to get that cost down. So, there's still numbers that are out. I just wanted to make sure we were all, had the same information in front of us in case, you know, questions arise, that we all know where my concerns lie. And I think a lot of the concerns with the FinCom and us is some of those, the top number not coming down really. Overall, it is what it is. But if the state aid stays higher, like it is, that will be, that's awesome for the town.
Alright, I appreciate the update.
That's it.
Carlos, any questions on that?
No, I've been working with Debbie and the school committee, and everybody needed to stay up to date on this. I'll echo what many of you have said. Great teamwork between both the school committee and the town. It's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of emails. So, for all those out there listening, watching, we're all working hard to do the best we can. So, thank you for everybody in reference.
Thank you. Alright, item five. Now, this is on whether to increase the number of committee spaces for the Parade and Fireworks Committee to 13 members. And we received a email on this or discussion. You know, there's three additional folks who'd like to join. Are you Judy, by the way? No? Samantha? Okay, sorry. But you're interested in joining, I thought. I knew there was some kind of relationship there. Alright, so this makes sense to me. I have no problems with it. Carlos, I know, I'm sure you're in favor of this, considering, you know, your interest to be on the committee. Is that true?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, great. Jared, any kind of?
No, no, I mean, if, you know, active members for any board like this is great. So, I'm okay with it. I mean, 13, you know, if you start trying to climb much above 13, then you start dealing with the point of quorums, and that's where it becomes issues and then too many opposing theories. But someone who wants to participate in town stuff, amen. That's what it's all about.
Alright, yeah.
We appreciate it.
I agree. I mean, and I feel like this is kind of one of those committees that quorum might not be an issue. It's kind of something, I think, the people are involved in it, are passionate about it, and want to, you know, they're gonna show up to the meetings, so.
So, and they already have, it looks like they already have a good start this year with the parade going off and fireworks, so.
Yep.
Going back to quote-unquote "normal," so.
That's great.
Excited for that.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, we already got the route voted on, so everything should be good, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to increase the number of committee spaces for the Parade and Fireworks Committee to 13 members.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, item six. This is for the MS4 General Permit Assistance Plan for five, years five and six. It's like we do this every year, right?
Literally.
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, because it fell behind, and then we decided coming back up with it. So, every year, this has to come home.
Yes, we are in compliance. Unfortunately, it's a year, it's a 10-year permit that requires us to do yearly... A lot of engineering, Environmental Partners is who we work with on this. And the cost runs about $50,000 a year for this permit, and that's been pretty consistent with them. And so, this is just their proposal for the next two years at $98,000 total. It's not a contract, but it's just, you know, put in front of you to say, "Are you, you know, interested in this?" And we really don't have a choice. We have to have this permit, and we have to do the filings.
Alright, that makes it easier as a decision, at least. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the MS4 General Permit Assistance Plan for years five and six from Environmental Partners.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay. Moving on, item seven. This is informational sheet for ballot questions and authorization to post on the town website. I don't think I saw the latest and greatest of one of these.
So, I sent it all to you originally, but then I sent it also to the town council?
Yeah.
Who marked it up and made changes, so.
Yeah, so I read the original copy, and I thought that was really good. I know there was, you know, some concerns, you know, I know we have to be careful with the language you use.
He didn't, he didn't change much of my language, but he took out some of my language, some of the explanations, which I struggled with a little bit, but I just kind of got this late in the day today. But I can continue tomorrow morning to sort of work with him and get this posted. I just want to make sure that we can get some information out about this ballot question. I know there's been different things posted on Facebook, and it always concerns me, because I want to make sure that I can get factual information out to people so they can make the best decision for them when it comes to this ballot question. It is requiring, asking for a debt exclusion, which will increase their taxes.
Yep.
And I think it's really important that they understand what they're voting for, or not voting for, one way or the other. So, I did send it to about 10 key personnel and got their input, and that was great. And they, you know, I tweeted it, tried to make sure that it was factual. I want to make sure that I'm not putting anything in here that's not factual.
So, I think it looks like council took out the, what does a no vote mean?
Yes, he changed that around.
Yeah, I like the no vote part, but I understand that.
And it was honest. It wasn't misleading.
And I, actually, my comment on the back part of it was is that that wasn't harsh enough, right? And then they took it out completely, so I respect that, right? Because they're the attorneys, that's what they're gonna do.
Yeah, no, I just, you have to be careful.
The question is with elections, you can't, you can't be persuasive. You have to be completely factual, and that's it.
Yeah.
And if you get, if you're persuasive, then the whole election can be thrown, and we have to redo it, right?
Which makes sense.
We don't want to go down that road. And not that I think, like I said, I was just being factual, that if there's a no vote, there may be budget cuts next year. I won't know until we're closer into that budget season, but just projecting forward and knowing what the cost is going to be, there may be budget cuts, unless I can come up with some more income or, you know, something drastically changes. I, it's hard to really project, so he took that language out.
Okay, I mean, it's a tough situation, because what are we supposed to do? Like, we can't really go against our council's recommendation on that. But yeah, I think that this is great, though, anyways.
Well, I hope that if people have questions, that they reach out. And I have had some people call me, and again, I'm trying to be... I don't necessarily have an opinion one way or another. I just want to give you the information so you can make the right decision for yourself.
Yeah, I do have an opinion, but...
Yeah, we all have, I mean, you'll vote your vote, and I'll vote my vote, but I'm just saying, like, my goal is to get you the correct information.
Exactly.
And whatever, and so, you know, there's, everybody's in a different position in life, and it will affect them differently.
100%. Alright, Carlos, any input on this, or?
No, I think I've been very clear from the beginning. More information put out there, the better we are, just to keep everybody transparent, keep everything transparent so that, you know, the voters know what they're voting on, pro, con, or whatever your stance on it. At least you know, you just made your decision. If you don't vote, you don't have a say, so.
Alright, alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the informational sheet for ballot question and question and authorization to post on the town's website and Facebook.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to agenda item eight. This is on the OPM contract for the fire station addition slash renovation. And this is just for you to kind of sign off on that and negotiate it.
Yeah, that was a more, less negotiable than most contracts, because they kind of just charge a percentage of the cost. But we did go have interviews this week with the fire building committee and the applicants for the OPM. They have chose one that they, that they like, and if we can at least come to an agreement, we will have an OPM, and we'll be moving forward on their project.
That's awesome.
It is exciting.
It's exciting.
I think this one, knock on wood, and I don't want to jinx us, but I think it seems like we're moving forward in the right direction at a good pace.
Yeah, everyone seems to be on the same kind of page with that.
We're moving. It's happening.
Well, this is, this is a good test case for, you know, future projects that we'll have to do, you know, so.
I think this one is simpler on some level, but so exciting.
Absolutely. Alright, great. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the interim town administrator to negotiate the OPM contract for the fire station addition slash renovation.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
All.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, and now I will kick it over to Selectman Lopes for personnel.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Item number nine. Discussion and vote whether appoint Dean Gamaris, Dean M. Gamaris, as single operator full-time. Start him at the step three based on prior experience, effective 4/10/2023 through 6/30/2023, pages 56 to 58 of our packet. Mr. Gamaris here has previous experience, and we've experienced some higher difficulties within the signal operator community. So, this is a win for us in the sense that we have someone already with experience. But at the same time, we want to make sure we're compensating our folks for their talents and contributions to our signal operating center. So, this is, this is a smart move on our town.
It's just a quick question. So, is this the first applicant we've got, we've received for this? Trying to remember if we have any other single operators that have, because I know we just created the position recently. I've been, I've been just telling everyone I can talk to, like, "This is a great gig. Everyone should do it."
No, this is, this is dispatch.
Oh, okay, dispatch. Oh, sorry, I was thinking of the flag. Never mind. I was, when I read this, I was thinking the flag thing, totally.
Yeah, so we've...
Just disregard that.
We've had some...
Strike it from the record. Alright.
Well, I do agree with you. Tell everybody you know, because they are looking for more people, so.
Such a good gig.
Talk to everybody.
Alright, sorry about that.
No, it's quite all right. Any further discussion needed on item agenda nine?
No.
Alright. I entertain the motion to appoint Dean M. Gamaris as single operator full-time and start him at the step three based on prior experience, effective 4/10/2023 through 6/30/2023, pages 56 to 58 of our packet.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Alright, item agenda number 10. We have A through E. I'll read them all. And then towards the end of the point, we'll point A through E as previous times. If you have any discussions at all, please let me know, and we'll go from there. Alright. Item agenda 10A, Rebecca Frias as Council on Aging Director, Citizen for Citizens Freetown Representative and Public Records Clerk, Council of Aging, effective 3/29/2023 through 6/30/2023, again, pages 59, 60 in our packet. Item agenda 10B, Alyssa J. Silva as Programming Outreach Librarian, effective 3/16/2023 through 6/30/2023, page 61 of our agenda. Binders. Item agenda 10C, Trevor Matthews to Master Plan Committee, Board of Select and Representatives, effective 3/29/2023 through 6/30/2023, page 62 of our agenda. 10D, Carlos Lopes, myself, Samantha Downs and Amanda Farmer to Parade and Fireworks Committee, effective 3/29/2023 through 6/30/2023, pages 63 through 65 of our agenda packet. 10E, Deborah L. Petty and Victoria D. Anthony as SerPET Commission Member, Freetown Representative, effective 5/24/2023 through 5/22/2024, pages 66 and 67 of our packet. Any discussions, concerns? Pages sixty-six and sixty-seven of our packet, any discussions, concerns, questions on A through E?
Well, my only concern is, is you can't appoint yourself, right? So, if, um, we do this as a whole, then you have Trevor making, you know, voting on. Voting himself in, and you voting yourself in on something.
So I think, yeah, I think we do, let's, let's do one vote for A, B, and E, and then two separate votes for C and D.
Yeah, just gotta keep it clean, so that this doesn't have to come back up on you one year again, so.
Making sure we're all on the same pitch, thank you. So, I entertain the motion to make the appointments for A and B. Of item agenda ten, Rebecca Frias, the Council of Aging, effective three-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three through six-thirty, twenty-twenty-three. Alyssa Silva as Programming Outreach Librarian, effective three-sixteen, twenty-twenty-three through six-thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
I, item, I, I entertain the motion to approve item agenda ten E. Deborah L. Petty, Victoria D. Anthony, as SerPeg Commission Members, a Free Town Representative. Effective five-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three through s- five-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four.
Make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright, then, y- y- yeah, how about you do C, and then I'll do D?
Sounds good, item agenda ten C, Trevor Matthews to Master Plan Committee, Board of Select and Representative, effective three-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three. Through six-thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
I will make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Alright, and uh, Jen MD, or agenda ten D. Carlos Lopes, Samantha Downs, and Amanda Farmer to Parade and Fireworks Committee, effective three-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three through six-thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion made?
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, alright.
Thank you. Can I continue, or?
I think so, I think we're good, so, agenda item eleven.
Okay, item general eleven, discussion and vote whether, whether to sign off on the following policies, pages sixty, sixty-nine through seventy-nine. Uh, A, backing fire apparatus policy for fire, B, equal opportunity, equal opportunity, opportunity discrimination, sexual harassment. For police in workplace, C, workplace harassment for police. Uh, as we've discussed at previous meetings, we're, you know, department by department, and we're looking at all the policies. That have, that are in place, and see what needs to be dusted off, and ensure it's up to date in twenty-twenty-three and above. So this is just, um, the continuation of that conversation.
Ha- has, uh, the attorneys check, check these out, or is that not really necessary?
They, they are already in place with the fire and, and police. So these are already in place, we, we need you to just approve them, because Maya will give us insurance credits if we give them to them. So, they've already, you know, they're already in effect.
Okay.
With police and fire, these particular ones.
Cause then that was gonna be my next question, was the union, right? So, that's all, perfect, thank you.
Alright, they're good to go.
Alright, I entertain the motion to approve, uh, back and signing off on the following policies. A, back and fire apparatus policy, B, EEO, or equal employment opportunity discrimination, sexual harassment policy, police. And work, and C, workplace harassment, police.
I'll make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Excellent, item agenda twelve, discussion and vote whether to approve the disclosure form. From public health nurse, also being a, a qualified firefighter EMT, which is pages fifteen, eighteen, eighty-two of our packet agenda. This is just, uh, as clear, as clear as it can be, it's, full disclosure was submitted to notify us that there's. Or perceived conflict potentially out there of, of interest, but disclosure form is, is what's required by, by all public officials, so. This was done, and I think it was done appropriately, uh, depth, if you have any more to add to it, I think that's, pretty straightforward.
No, I have no concerns.
I didn't know, or was it, it's, it's cool.
Oh, she's been, she's been a, a, a qualified fighter, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, listen, she's a nurse, she's.
Yeah, that's perfect.
That's right, we gotta keep that talent in Free Town, so this is great of her to go on her own and file this disclosure with the town clerk. Which is appropriate and necessary for public officials, so, good on her, good on the town.
Alright, great.
Alright, I entertain the motion to approve the disclosure form from the public health nurse, also, also being a qualified firefighter EMT.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, that seems to be the end, um, well, so one thing, did we, did we call roll call on that first vote we did?
Yes.
We did. Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure.
I was on point there.
Alright. So we'll sign, and then we'll adjourn. You still her pen, yeah.
Debbie, I think you should hang up all these certificates across your office, you're like a wallpaper with how many things that you have.
We've done an extra of walking on all those credits in the hospital, you know.
Yeah, that, that, that goes a long way.
She's been chasing them down without any assistance from me, so.
Thank you.
I, uh, it's a lot of work, but.
Just that one, right, the bottom line?
It'll pay off in the end.
See the police and fi- and ambulance at Circle K?
Yeah.
Is that just me, or is that Jared? Alright, good. Alright, with that, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.